Start the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens. We pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Join the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, in two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Corcoran, just call the roll.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Eleven present.
Two, mayor's business.
Excuse me.
I oppose it. Counselor Mercia, hold the silence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Richard A. Freitas, as requested by State Rep. Rodney Elliott. Richard A. Freitas, beloved husband of Karen Kane Freitas, with whom he shared over 29 wonderful years of marriage. He was a graduate and outstanding wrestler of Lowell High School, class of 1971. He was a member of their varsity team for three years. Ricky won the Massachusetts State Championship during the 70-71 season and had moved on to both the state and the New England Championships. After graduation, he attended Tabor Academy and won the New England Prep Team Championship. Ricky graduated from Tabor and enrolled at Boston University. He was undefeated his freshman year and again a member of an undefeated team three years running. Ricky won the New England Championship, was voted Outstanding Wrestler at the New England's, and then had qualified for the NCAA Championship, a first for the Terriers. He also received Freshman All-American honors that season. Rick then transferred to Montclair, New Jersey State College, where he continued his incredible wrestling career. He was a two-time conference champion with the Montclair's team. In 1977, he was crowned with winning the NCAA Division III Championship, becoming the first Massachusetts wrestler to win an NCAA title and leading Montclair State to an NCAA Team Championship. Rick was then named to the NCAA All-American Team and Montclair State's Outstanding Senior Athlete. Rick began a coaching career at Upsala College and UMass Amherst, which he led his team to 15 NCAA qualifiers and eight conference champions. Rich was also the director of St. Ambrose Family Shelter in Dorchester for over 22 years. During his time with the shelter, he was instrumental in establishing the Giving Garden, which supplies fruit and vegetables to many families in the Dorchester neighborhood. He was active in building a solid philanthropy base and was always recruiting volunteers to assist the many families within the program. Surviving him in addition to his loving wife Karen, two sisters Paula Steele and Pauline Vazina. He was also predeceased by his two brothers Manny and Paul Freitas. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all the loved ones who passed on since our last city council meeting. They will be truly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If I quickly could, about Ricky Freitas. You know, I've known Ricky my entire life. You know, he was very close with both my father and Counselor Robinson's father as well. His volunteer work is legendary in the city. One of those people that you would never know all the work behind the scenes that Ricky has done. And obviously, as Counselor Mercia said, comes from a legendary Lowell family, very well-known and well-respected throughout a great city. So, Counselor, thank you very much. That being said, turn the lights, please. Moving on to mayor's business, 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Motion to accept by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Dakota. Third, a City Clerk minutes, 3.1 minutes of the 2024-2025 City Council inauguration on January 2nd, and also the regular council meeting on the same date on January 2nd. Motion to accept by Counselor Getchea, seconded by Counselor Janess. Section 4, Unfinished Business. We have seven on. Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Just, could we just clarify, is there an error in the agenda of these out of order tonight? Or could we just get an opinion?
Mr. Solicitor.
Hi. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I think, in my opinion, these should have been on as new City Council motions. I think that would be the most appropriate way for the body to hear them. That would be my suggestion.
All right. So whatever we should do to correct it until the next meeting or whatever.
Well, maybe a motion to Counselor Robinson.
Can I make a motion to take these from unfinished business and place them under City Council motions for the next meeting if that's allowed by my colleagues? Or now, whatever works through you to the Solicitor.
Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So that would be completely up to Counselor Robinson yourself or the body. Could be tonight, could be next meeting. Either way, it's appropriate.
I would second that for the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Next meeting works.
Counselor Getchea.
Mr. Mayor, there are a couple on here that are duplicates of current motions on there. Can we remove those and bundle them with the ones that are currently on there for tonight so that we don't have to duplicate the same thing the following week? So I'd like to make a motion just to take them and just bundle those two with the ones that Counselor Noon.
How about a motion to take the motions tonight?
I'm sorry.
How about a motion just to hear them tonight?
Yeah, I'll make a motion just to take them all tonight so we don't have to do this. I think it gets confusing all the way through.
Yeah, there are multiple motions that are very similar in effect. So Counselor Getchea, seconded by Counselor Mercia. All's in favor? Say aye opposed. All right, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, so can we make, can I make a motion to bundle the two that are similar already on the agenda for tonight?
Sure. I just have to proceed to question the clerk. Mr. Clerk, do we hear the four, the six, seven motions now? Would you wait until we get to the motion part of the agenda?
I would wait. If the motion, the last motion that was made to move them to the...
If the last motion made was to move them to the current City Council motions, I would wait at that time to bundle what's necessary.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Not being seven o'clock yet, we'll get into the City Council.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, ask to move motion 6.5 out of order because we have a speaker here.
Motion by Counselor Yem, seconded by Counselor Scott to move 6.5 up.
6.5, yes.
All's in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. 6.5, Counselor Yem, request city manager have appropriate department provide update on the renovation of North Common and Roberto Clemente Parks, aka Palin Park on Millsack Street. Seconded by Counselor Noon.
There are registered speakers, Mr. Mayor. Maria Claudio.
My name is Maria Claudio de Roberto Clemente Procedal Lee. This is my interpreter. Pregúntale que yo le entregué a ellos en inglés. Good evening, everyone. City officials and Honorable Mayor Rourke, congratulations. Mrs. Maria Claudio, everybody knows that she's not fluent in, you know, in English. She's not a fluent speaker. And she did a statement in which I translated to English, and I'm gonna read it as it is. So it's, "Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and everyone currently present. Thank you for including us again in this discussion about the updates at Carney Field, Carney Field North Common. There are many motions that have been made regarding updates, and we want to see results." And she has motions attached. I, Maria Claudio, have been president of Roberto Clemente League for a long time, and it is more than a simple baseball league, which is aimed at children and young athletes in our community, especially the acre, a community of families, friends, neighbors, and members. Families come together to provide a safe space for these children and young people to learn vital skills such as teamwork, collaboration, and leadership, and to feel the support of the committed adults towards our league, which is vital in the acre. The North Common is a community space in the acre, and the moving to the Carney Field North Commons as a home field has increased visibility and support for teams and visitors as we hope to continue to keep it as home field for the league. We want to be proud of the place where we play and host several teams from different countries and adjacent cities. It is for this reason that of the many motions that have been made for the arrangements and updates of the park and have returned with more motions. The bathroom, the concession stands, and trash cans are needed. This would be a vital step for our children, the visiting teams, and various organizations that use the North Common for events and activities. Several motions have been made regarding this, but they always tell us the same thing. We are tired of being treated like a ping pong ball, and we don't see the results that we want to see. We want action, not words. It is not fair that when teams from different countries and cities visit us, we have to go through all the about not having any bathrooms, and when available, only in unsanitary and poor conditions. Parks are given to us with filled trash cans and grass that is overgrown. Last year, we went through something similar. Counselor Robinson and Counselor Getchea both witnessed what happened. Most of these parents of our young people are voters in the city, and we want equal treatment for all. This league is the only Spanish-speaking one in our city, and we want the same respect as the others. We are already tired of so many motions through the years, and nothing is being done. We hope that the rest of the councilors here can see the value of doing better things and improvements to the North Common and Roberto Clemente Field, and that they are taken into action as soon as possible for the deliberation that we deserve. Thanks in advance, quarterly Maria Claudio, current president of the Roberto Clemente League of Lowell.
Just the address for the record, please.
I'm sorry that I didn't introduce myself. My name is Betsy Toro Señanz. I'm an activist in the city of Lowell and also the director of the Page Comunidad de Lowell.
And just the address for the record, please.
110 Boylston Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmen Bermudez. Carmen Bermudez.
Good evening. I have only one question. Eric Arias, he's not really fluent in English. Is it fine if he speaks with me?
Absolutely. It's fine.
Just state name and record, name and address for the record, please, Eric.
I'm Angel Tenio. I'm an active baseball player for Maria Roberto Clemente League. We were playing for the past last season, and we're really looking for improvement on our field because sometimes we're looking for someplace to play. So basically, what I'm trying to say, I'm sorry. Our field needs improvement. I feel like it has a lot of potential. We have a lot of really good players on our team, and we just need help for our team to become better and more supplies. That'll be all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you're good.
I just gotta say that...
If everybody could just please state your name and address when it comes to the podium, that'd be great.
Eric Arias.
What's your address, sir?
Address, oh, 35 Onlin Street.
Thank you. Perfect.
As a baseball player and like, as a, as an activo, like, I'm trying to say that, like, I don't know what to say, that's a...
Did I say a Spanish?
No, that's a, yeah, but...
Did I say a Spanish?
No, como un jugador, uh, ladies, no, I didn't know, ten.
I guess Spanish.
Yeah, like a Spanish, a Spanish player, yeah. I'm trying to say that we need like more support because there's not like a lot of people that can be in the league, like Spanish people, that can be like in a league for, to play with other people, like, like, like me. I can't, when I came to this country, I was like lost and things. So I just had to say that this league made me feel like in a good place, like comfortable, and I wanna like, like, tell everybody that this league has a lot of potential and got something to tell. Thank you.
Thank you. Felicita Espinal.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Felicita Espinal. Vivo en la 292 Adam Street, apartmento 235.
So my name is Felicia Espinal, and my address is?
292.
292.
Adam Street.
Adam Street.
Apartment 235.
Mi preocupación es la seguridad del parque y la seguridad de nosotros, lo que vivimos por ahí, porque yo trabajo con la comunidad y nos sentimos inseguros cuando hay juego el de los niños. So I am very concerned about the safety of the park since I work with the community and with the children in the community.
Yo como madre y abuela que tengo más de quince niños en los juegos.
I, as a grandmother and a mother who have children also joining the baseball leagues...
Cuando estábamos participando en los juegos, yo tenía que agarrar a todos los niños y llevármelo a un lugar seguro porque habían almas de fuego, hubieron un cuchillo, hubieron mucha cosa, la cual queremos que las autoridades nos ayuden con eso cuando haga los juegos, cuando tengamos alguna actividad en el parque.
So I, as a parent, I bring my children to the park, but we see criminal activity with knives, guns, and I have taken my children, you know, to a safety place because I don't feel safe and my children doesn't feel safe.
Nos preocupa mucho la seguridad. Yo trato de sacar a los niños de la calle. Me gusta que los niños se integren a lo deporte, y yo como, yo sé que ustedes como autoridades de aquí de Lowell no pueden ayudar en eso, en ese aspecto, para que nos den un poco más de seguridad cuando tengamos las actividades.
I am very concerned, and I am very mostly concerned about the safety, and I know you as officials can really do something about this issue.
Por ahí todavía vemos personas que somos decentes, que vivimos ahí, lo cual hay muchas delincuencia que tenemos que trabajarla, y a veces me siento yo misma, me siento insegura, pero estoy tratando de que los niños se aparten de la calle.
I live in the neighborhood, and I don't feel safe, and there's kids. We try to keep, you know, our children safe, and that's my major concern. We want to keep our children safe.
Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for translating as well. Counselor Yem.
I know this motion had been addressed by the DPW, the directors, and there was plan put out last year, but the community want to know if it's still on track, and they want to know, will it be ready for the next baseball game coming up? So that's the reason why they asked me to refile the motion for an update, and hopefully we can hear an update when the motion response is provided to the council and will be updated to the community. Thank you for the speaker who come out. Gracias señorita for coming out and speak, everybody. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I know this has been on the radar for a while. This league, I've interacted quite a bit with, and, I mean, some of the things that I would just like to point out about this league. The Yaki Foundation identified this league and fully supported and committed to a $25,000 grant over the course of two seasons to assist. ARPA money, it's, you know, open space improvements. One of the main recommendations is a QCT track, or QCT zone. This park falls squarely in the middle of the QCT zone, so I mean, I'm sure it qualifies for a lot of that expenditure. This, as you can see, this league helps to facilitate, it's more than just baseball. It helps to facilitate those that might face English language barrier over a positive constructive play, kinda like Palin Park does over in, you know, lower highlands with the volleyball nets. It builds up the communities. In Lawrence, when the town and city committed to improvement of the fields, I mean, the draws just to watch the game in the summer is amazing. This league brings teams in from New York, Dominican Republic, and all over to compete, which is another draw to the city, and again, it's helping to spread what Lowell has to offer. Our commitment to this kind of organization shows that, you know, here's an organization that kinda focuses on a lot of lower-income families and children, and they find a means to provide the resources needed. So anything we can do, I mean, I know when I worked for the city of Lowell, Steve Patel at the time was pushing to see if we could get just bathrooms facilities over there because by establishing a bathroom over there, it allowed them to station seasonal summer help with a dedicated landline and a restroom, as well as an organization that services lower income, a concession stand would help to defray and offset any expenditures that they might have to have by operating that to offset uniforms and other costs, umpires and everything else. So anything we can do to really kinda uplift this organization would be greatly appreciated. We've seen commitment, and I know that the administration has committed in the past, so I think it's just a matter of timeline and see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Mr. Man, through you to Manager Golden. I know last time we talked about this, we had plans, and it was gonna go to DPD, and we were getting ready for RFPs and everything. We're, and I thought one of the state reps was gonna give money, and it was all gonna be into the RFP process. Do we know where we are to DPD in this process? Are we getting close? Do we have, do we go out to RFP for this project? Because I remember seeing the plans for it, and I'm just wondering where we are.
Thank you. Ms. Paez.
The, both North Common and the Roberto Clemente Park are ARPA projects that are included in the neighborhood improvement portion of the ARPA plan. So Roberto Clemente Park has a combination of ARPA funds and Community Preservation Act funds that are funding improvements there, and North Common, excuse me, has, I believe, state earmarks and ARPA funds that are dedicated. Both of those projects, we, DPD went out to bid for the design work for all of the nine ARPA projects, and so the design is underway for the improvements at both of these locations with construction, so designed to be completed in '24 and construction to be done in '25 to align with the ARPA timeline.
So we're building one at grade Lowell, a field house, and can we pull this outside of this design and put it to the side and move these dates up? Because this seems like an awful long time for a concession stand or, you know, a bathroom setting. They normally don't take very long, and even at the school, the kids can build this in, you know, six to eight months. So I'm just wondering, you know, the plans are pretty straightforward, there's not a lot to it for just the concession stand piece that is important for people to not have to go into porta-partys all the time down there. It's just, to me, we took everything, even the little projects, and threw them into the bunch where now everything is, and now it's a major project rather than simplifying the ones that we can simplify, get those out of the way, take some pride in those things, and move on to the others. But we bundled everything together, and now it's just gotten maybe a little bit too convoluted for the residents to get to the process they want. Waiting another two years, a year and a half is, you know, it's not settling for a lot of people since we've been talking about this for over a year and a half. So that's a three-year process to build a bathroom with a little concession stand and some storage area. Thank you.
Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the concession stand, the bathroom, has already been done in Roberto Clemente Park. We are talking about Roberto Clemente Field and North Common that do not have need of those. The improvement to the Roberto Clemente Park is on the way, as the directors, Assistant City Manager, Director of DPD mentioned, as is design plan for other neighborhoods as well. I see an urgent in the North Common part of it because we have a certain building there that need to be renovated for, you know, bathroom and/or concession stand to add to it, and the improvement in that North Common. As far as the Roberto Clemente Field with that area, I don't know what the plans are with regard to or is regard to that. I know that ARPA money been, as Assistant City Managers mentioned, part of the ARPA money going to all the district, including one, the district in the acre will be North Common. So the urgent area for this request is that because this area, and you already have an organized team, baseball team, that been in existence for some time, this is a good thing. It's a good thing for the community, particularly for the acre area, to take a kid off the street and join an organized team and making sure that we have a safe, clean field in terms of the baseball. So I would urge the administration to look at this as urgency in terms of, for this particular North Common project. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Scott.
I would just like to make a motion asking for an update across all the ARPA projects on the timeline for them.
Motion by Counselor Scott, seconded by Counselor Getchea. All's in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Dakota.
I want to make sure we're not getting confused with projects here, Clemente, Field, or North Common. With the North Common project, right now, they have no bathrooms at all that are functioning? Is that correct or not?
Correct.
That is correct. All right, well, we have to change that before 2025.
I believe it's part of the project.
We have to. There's no doubt about it. I mean, that's just for the kids down there. It's, we're not talking equity here compared to some of the other fields in the city, so if we could move that up. Ms. Paez, is there any way of moving that up, Ms. Paez? That date for at least getting the bathrooms going and trash? And I mean, it just seems like it's not fair.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah? Mr. Mayor?
You can answer the question first or go to you, okay? Go ahead.
That's not how the ARPA projects were structured. I'm sure that we can talk to the administration and figure out something to do. Given staff capacity in the planning department, we tried to bundle like and similar projects together to try to efficiently use staff time and consolidate the number of contracts and designers and contractors that we're working with, but again, that's something that we can revisit if it's the will of the council.
If I may, the subcommittees will be done hopefully within the next hour or so. I believe the chair for the park, Subcommittee is Counselor Getchea, so if a subcommittee wants to be called with all these projects, it can be thoroughly gone through with the administration, and then, you know, maybe people want to come and talk about things and unnecessary changes or whatnot, that sounds like a good idea. Counselor? All right, great. Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment and clarification for Counselor Dakota. The North Common has an existing bathroom. However, its plumbing and everything is already in existence. It has not been used for a while, so the structure is already there. So if we can move it up at least to clean it up and make the bathroom, it has both bathroom for male and female already, but it wasn't been, has not been used for a while. So it doesn't take much, it's just clean it up and make it functional while we're waiting for the whole North Common baseball field to be completed. The concession stand was a request that add on to the existing structure that has the bathroom already so that whoever managing the leagues like Clemente... the bathroom already so that whoever managing the leagues, like Clemente, a little league, can manage concession stand, generating some revenues to support the league. So, similar to what we have a football, a baseball field at the, behind the China Star. So, that's just my clarification and a point of clarification for Councilor Dakota. Thank you.
Great. Good discussion. All's in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Being seven o'clock, we'll head to the general public hearing, just one for this evening. 5.1 ordinance to amend Chapter 9 by creating diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging committee. We will open the hearing, but all's in favor. All's in favor. That part of the hearing is closed. All's in favor of opposition. Opposition, the part of the hearing is also closed.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on this.
Yeah.
On the creation of this. I did notice, is there a reason, you know, I know it's an advisory committee as opposed to a board, but it falls under, I believe, Chapter 9. Boards commission the committees through amendment. But I see this requirement for membership appointment, terms, and qualifications, it does not require approval by city council. Is that for a specific reason or is that how we're doing? Is it consistent with what we already have in other areas?
Mr. Manja?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, we do have boards that do both. Some are requirements before the city council votes and some are not. This was a particular piece that was obviously brought up during the HRC campaign, human rights campaign, which I want to remind this council that because of all the hard work that was done here and the hard work of Melissa and the law department and of course Ms. Domenich is, we went to 91. So, we're following, I hesitate to say the playbook, but we've been talking about, talking to the HRC as to how to get these next pieces accomplished. And that's what we've been, what we've been doing. We're glad to, glad to bring it back again. This would be the third, bringing it back a second time, I believe, to have the council adopt this if you wish, but we're just trying to get this thing moving.
Thank you. It's just, would that be too much to ask that it would be approval by city council by appointment? Because in a way, I mean, with other boards, it's kind of a good way for the council to get to meet and see the board members and get a little bit of background information, even if it's just to say hi and see who's sitting on our boards. So, that way, I mean, it kind of starts establishing some kind of relationship, working relationship if possible.
Mrs. Sleser, is that something we could do tonight and vote on it or have to go back for another two weeks?
No, that would have to come back and then, because in order to make an amendment to an ordinance, we would have to put it back in front of all you again once we make that change.
Councilor Robinson, is there going to be a motion?
I'll make a motion if my colleagues want to, then we do it. If not, we won't. So, I'd make the motion just to amend approval by city council required.
Motion by Councilor Robinson, seconded by Councilor Mercia. All's in favor, say aye. Opposed? Roll call, Scott. I was just, you wouldn't have said it? The motion is to send it back. Okay. To a couple of weeks. You won't need a roll call for that. Send it back to the law department. I think we want to roll call that. Councilor Getche?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
No.
Councilor Leahy?
Uh, no.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
No.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rook?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yem?
Yes.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Dakota?
Yes.
Back to the law department. See you in a couple of weeks. Great. All right, returning to the motions. I will do 6.1. Motion by Councilor Getche. Request city manager provide the city council with a list of all professional development attended by lands and building staff, trade staff, working in municipal and school facilities over the past seven years. Seconded by Councilor Robinson, Councilor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rook. Going through the budgets in the past, you can, you can see that we have some issues with training. And to me, professional development is important because it builds human capital, teamwork, and it's the fundamental piece to all government agencies. I'm very interested in seeing how we are keeping up with the education of our maintenance staff going forward with, as we're seeing all of these maintenance issues. And can we build more human capital with people and try to keep them in these positions longer? Because people who go off to these trainings feel valued. And I just think that there's a lot of value to this and on both sides, not only for the city, but also for the employee to feel valued. And it does give that human capital piece. So, I'm just very curious and I would think that this would be a quick report to get back and we start looking at in our budgets, okay, what is that human capital piece for training and trying to get people to the next level who may not even be at that level, but we can train someone to be a replacement for people if they did take the opportunity to move on? And that's really what the gist of the motion is. Thank you.
Anything else? All's in favor, say aye. All's opposed, motion passes. 6.2. Councilor Getche, request city manager look into feasibility of offering city employees the Human Resources Seminar being offered this April by the Massachusetts Municipal Association and Suffolk University. Seconded by Councilor Mercia, Councilor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rook, again. Over the last year, we've seen our HR director is retiring and we thank her for her service. We've seen the second-in-command go to part-time and with the HR openings and the importance of trained HR personnel. I read this seminar on MMA that Suffolk was putting forward and if there are interested parties within the city that can look at this. And it has a lot of interesting points in this seminar. When you look at it, it has hiring and onboarding, benefits administration, policy development, collective bargaining, employee reviews and evaluations, labor law, and best practices in municipal and human resource management. And it's done by Suffolk University. And it's a seminar that's done four Thursdays and it's online. So, it's not like you're sending someone out to, you know, the western part of the state to do one of these seminars. But I think it would be good for a lot of people to look at this. And it seems to be affordable for the city to put multiple people in this if they can get in. I guess it's a competitive application piece for it. But if we can get in there sooner rather than later, I think it will have a lot of benefits to us while we have openings down there and give people more way to benefit the city and also better themselves. Thank you.
Any other comments? Being none, all's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. 6.3. Councilor Getche. Request city manager have the proper department to allow school principals access to school dude tickets, to enable them to see the status of all tickets they put into the system. Seconded by Councilor Leahy, Councilor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rook. What this really is, is it basically work order system. So, something goes into a work order system, say Mayor Rook put something into a work order system, he should be able to follow it and say, okay, where is this? Did it get done and shouldn't be done? I did speak to somebody who's involved with this and they said to me that they would have no problem with training people on the school side and get them used to using this. But it, they agreed that this would be a proper thing to do, but they also thought that it was in place. So, I'm not sure. Some people may know how to do it, some may not. Maybe we hold the training for all people, principals who can put in the tickets, principals because, Manager Golden?
Mr. Manja? Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, you're right. Some have it, some have access, some don't. So, we've been talking to these folks about trying to bring it back up and put it back into mainstream to make sure that all the principals can follow it. Now, some of the principals give their senior custodians the ability to file and follow up, but we probably should make sure that every new principal out there has access to this. You know, to my knowledge, they, some do and some don't. So, this is something we will easily revisit.
One of the things, Manager Golden, that I've learned in my days of DPW and facilities is that some people can take that you're not as far along as what they think as long as they have communication back and forth. And I think, you know, if you say something's not working and you can say to the justified and say, look, you know what? The pot's six weeks out and the person who put it in knows that, then it cuts down on all the confusion and all the animosity that's going on in the city. Because now we have to, it gets to this level and it gets really out of control on some of the things that are very simple, that if we just had a conversation and said to someone, hey, look, this is about three weeks out. If you need anything in between, please come to me. But I think we, you know, we're at that stage where we just have to get better communications between people and just say, look, you know what? Here's our issue. If there's something I can help you with in between, I'll certainly do it. But I think that's where we're wasting a lot of energy. And I think it can be dialed down if we just have better communications back and forth. Thank you.
Councilor Dakota?
City Manager Golden pretty much answered my question that all school principals would have access, which is great. And jumping on Councilor Getche's, I think what this does is more of a communication. The school principals know where they are in the queue, when the issues will be resolved. I think this is a win-win for everybody. Good motion.
Councilor Lee?
Thank you. This is a good motion. I just kind of assumed that everybody had this. My advice over the years is it's your building, it's your responsibility, and you're the one that needs to keep up with this. So, every principal should have access to this and they should be following up. I mean, if there's a broken window and it's there for 10 weeks, then it's on the principals because they're the ones that should be hounding to get this stuff fixed. So, this would be great if everybody has access to it. And then, you know, it opens up more communication, but responsibility has to follow with this too. So, thank you.
Anything else in comments? All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Motion 6.4. Councilor Yem, request city manager have the appropriate department update the city council on the plan to celebrate the city bicentennial anniversary. Seconded by Councilor Scott, Councilor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love partying, so the motion speak for itself. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. 6.6. Councilor Leahy, request city manager have proper department reexamine the parking lot entrance at Smith, Smythe Cannabis on Rogers Street. Seconded by Councilor Noon, Councilor Leahy.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. Could we just find out if this went through zoning or the planning board? And basically, as far as I'm concerned, we need to redesign this. There's almost accidents every night there. People are supposed to turn right, they're turning left. I almost got hit there the other night myself. So, as far as I'm concerned, if it was in the planning board, shut them down in May until they fix it and redesign that parking lot so when you pull out, there's no way you can take a left-hand turn. So, and if it turns into shutting them down, then they have to shut down for a week and redesign it, and that'll move them to do this. Because it really is, you know, it's a distraction, people almost getting hit. And we've been in there, I've been in there myself, asking them to correct this and, you know, we shouldn't have to put a police detail there. So, it needs to get done this spring. We need to set a timeline, whatever is reasonable, two, three months, but it needs to get done. There's just too many near accidents there. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson first, then, Mr. Manja.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. This sounds like to me, honestly, instead of a negative impact on a small business owner like this, I think this is the exact definition that the state is looking for local communities to kind of utilize the HCA, host community agreement. I mean, this is a very clearly identified, justifiable situation where police detail. Because I believe the state has ruled that for communities, in order to collect that host community agreement fee from these kind of businesses, we have to justify expenditures associated or the impact on the community by these businesses. So, this seems like a prime example for us to utilize. I mean, whether it's detail or whatever you have to do through the department, I think that's what HCA is there for without putting a shutdown order on a business as opposed to pay for the additional expenditures. Thank you.
Mr. Manja?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council is, this was a little bit tumultuous for the planning board as well as, and Council, to your point about the HCA, this is where the argue is. The argument always breaks down. The devil's always in the details and stuff like that. There is no impact to some and to many there is an impact. So, from this point, I'm going to be asking Assistant City Manager Rose just to maybe comment in regards to planning board. But this is something, this is a real concern, obviously, back and forth with the planning board with the argument that HCA should be utilized. And there obviously now, the proof is there that there is an impact. So, Assistant City Manager Rose?
Thank you. So, this did go through the approval process, but one of the things that, you know, they include in the package when they got that approval was a traffic assessment or assumption of what the traffic would be, which this location has far exceeded what their estimates were at the time. And so, they have been asked to do a new traffic assessment study, which they did do and provided and are, have provided that information along with procuring the services of an engineering firm to redesign the exit of, from their parking area to kind of, right now, it's like a little bitty island kind of that people are essentially kind of driving around and/or over in order to take a left. And their plans essentially are showing a more substantial kind of forced right out of the parking lot. Because they're going on to Route 38, this is something that Mast dot actually does need to approve. And so, we've been in very recent communication with the representatives of this retail location. They have provided that information to Mast dot. And right now, we're in the stage of waiting to hear back that Mast dot approves their engineered recommendation. And then the plan is to move forward with those designs. So, you know, I live in the area myself and have absolutely dealt with the traffic implications. But from the staff side, we feel like this group has been responsive to the requests and moved quickly to try to do right by fixing the situation. So, again, we're currently waiting for Mast dot to approve the recommended changes and then they'll go through the process of permitting the changes that have been approved.
So, to follow up with that, are they, are they basically going to have one entrance and then 20 feet away an exit? Or are they going to redesign the middle where they come and where they enter and exit?
Just answer. So, the plan is to, it's gonna, it's not to move the, it's to leave the entrance and exit where they are to expand the location and size of the sort of center island so that it actually curves to the right. And then to also change the structure of the existing sidewalk on the other side of the island as well. So, again, it'll almost make it a right-hand turn coming out of the parking lot. And again, they're also, so that's like the structural construction change that they're talking about and then also committing to additional monitoring once that is implemented to ensure that it makes.
Will you have say in it? In the plans?
First, we need Mast dot to approve it.
Right. But I mean, I'm thinking if you're going to keep it the same, and I don't want to redesign it for them, but I am, it should have like a little wall so you can't drive over it. I mean, it's got to be clear. Down at the Hanaford entrance, which is a right-hand turn and a right-hand exit, same thing. Everybody's taking left-hand turns across traffic when you're not supposed to. And so, you know, this needs to be done correctly. And I have all my trust in you, Giovanni. So, if it's a little bit of a wall that they can't drive over, then that's what it should be.
I will just say that certainly Liz Altman, the transportation engineer, is involved in the ongoing conversations and will be reviewing any recommendations before, before work's done.
All right. Because I trust you. Thank you.
Councilor Getche?
I guess my, it piques my curiosity is when plans are developed and they go through traffic studies and anybody in the city builds a property and it meets all the traffic regulations, who is responsible for the mistake in the end? Does it go to the business owner or does it come back to the state and the city because they didn't project their traffic numbers? It's an interesting walk on that.
The, those traffic studies are engaged by the business themselves. So, they are the ones who hired folks to do a traffic analysis based on what they assumed their business plan would be. And so, typically, when approvals are made based on certain traffic volumes that were assumed and changes need to be made, that does fall on the business owner.
It's interesting to me just because, you know, you're looking at Tulip. Someone okays the plans here, that should probably do a study also. okays the plans here, that should probably do a study also at the same time and say, this will meet our needs, so we should be looking at it at the same time and making sure that when they're putting in these things, we're not just taking everybody's word for it because they hired their own engineer and they wanted this, and that's how this ends up this way. But we should be also balancing that off and saying, okay, does this make sense? As Councilor Leahy is saying here, is that if you just go down the street, you could have seen the way Hanaford was going in and out, and you'd say, okay, wait a minute, we gotta back up the bus a little bit. I just wondered who would be responsible for, you know, trying to make this right. Thank you.
All's in favor say aye, opposed nay, motion passes. We already dealt with 6.7. 6.8, Councilor Noon, request city manager have DPW Commissioner present winter operations plan and preparedness to the city council at a regularly scheduled meeting.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to bundle that with, so it appears as 4.3 on?
4.3, Councilor Robinson, request city manager provide update on the city's status on winter operations preparedness. No second needed, Councilor Noon.
What was that again, Mr. Mayor?
So it took two motions, no second needed, so you're up to speak on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the DPD, they have done a very good job this, yesterday, in terms of clearing the snow and all that. But we can do better in term of the crosswalk, particularly in the downtown area. I heard from, you know, people that a lot of crosswalk in the downtown has not been cleared, so I urge that we continue to keep an eye on that. I know that is a difficult task, people who live on a side street, they, you know, raise concern about when the snow, you know, plowders are going through, car on both sides, and sometimes, you know, people clear their driveway, their sidewalk and all that, and then pull on top of it. I know that is a difficult thing for the plower to do. I don't know the answers to it. I know that every year we come to that, people raise those concern. I just leave it to the DPD and to you, Mr. Managers, to see what can we do to mitigate that. I know that there's no way probably you can, you know, solve it completely, but mitigate it if possible. That's the only concern I have, that's what I heard. I know that DPD, as I said earlier, this, yesterday have done a very good job at, you know, you know, so continue to do that work and maybe touch on stuff that need to be touched on, either crosswalk or sidewalk, you know, that we need to do, the city-owned properties, you know, so that's all.
Thank you. Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. We touched on this, I had a conversation, because I spoke to the manager earlier about a couple of locations in the district, Sunnerville. And I think something we might need to look at is, again, it's completely the department head's call, but maybe focusing on teams that are tasked with specifically walkways, bridges, so that way there is attention. I'm also hearing there's been some new pieces of equipment that have been bought and kind of piloted this first 17-inch storm, which is tough to try anything new in. It's not a three- or four-inch storm that has any kind of give, so to say. I think some of the new equipment that was purchased is too large to function on the narrow sidewalks we currently have in downtown. And again, I'm going to harp on weight restrictions. A lot of our areas have vaults underneath, and the last thing you want to do is put something too heavy to cause failure, structural failure on those old vaults. So I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces involved with that. In addition, maybe it's staffing, maybe it's, you know, I know when I was involved with the union, we utilized, we had a protocol for calling for drivers based on if you had a Class A license, Class B license, whatever it may be, and there was an order operations for calling. Maybe we expand and look if any other employees that we currently have that are normally off during snowstorms, for whatever reason, might be interested in coming in and doing some manual labor to help assist and do crosswalks, and especially the handicap on and off ramps in our business districts in our neighborhoods, because again, we lost the title of strictly laborer so many years ago, and that was the primary function of those positions. They did a lot of this, you know, shoveling the steps of the different facilities that were responsible for, the handicap accessible ramps, on and off ramps. So I mean, maybe we reach out and offer some money to high school kids, anything we could do with people in the community to see, because this is going to be manual labor work that we're talking to fine-tune a lot of the stuff during snowstorms. And as we're aware, it's tough to get employees, and we can't just put an additional 20, 30 employees on the books permanent, but maybe we create an opportunity for people to pick up additional money. Thank you.
Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, kudos to Mr. St. Sierra. He had a, his first winter storm was a big one right after, right after start, so kudos to his crew. But obviously, in my position at the school department, I had to write, drive the roads to make sure what was going to happen, making a decision with the superintendent. And I must say, the side streets were very difficult to manage, and it wasn't the DPW's fault or the contractors, it was because we had cars that were not heating, but Chief Superintendent Huedon had put out for emergency parking ban. There's still, there's still cars out there with 17 inches of snow in their hoods right now. I know we towed 70 cars, I believe, I think right around that, City Manager Golden was, is that my kind of, okay. But I got to tell you, some of these side streets are still in tough shape, and that is the reason, because some of these people just are not, if they don't understand what the safety concern is here, then let's tow them. Tow the cars. I think that's the only way people are going to start getting messages here, is that this is for the safety of everyone, is that we have to make sure this, my street, I gave Assistant City Manager Machado a call, my street has never been wider, even without snow. It's great. There were 12, 13 cars out there. Gone. Actually, the police department knocked on people's doors, but I give the kudos to the Lowell Police Department, but I think, I think we need to maybe push the lever just a little bit more, that's all. Thank you.
Councilor Leahy.
Thank you. Through you to the manager, so my two cents. I thought everybody did a pretty good job, we're just understaffed, you know, and it's very obvious. And I think in the coming weeks, when we go, when you go over this with the staff and the commissioner and stuff, just again, some of my concerns, again, are the sidewalks downtown. The downtown seemed pretty good. You were on the radio the other morning, and you saw the big front-end loader going by, and my only question to that is, you know, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm right on this, but, you know, why wasn't it a smaller truck so the trucks could weave in and out, take the corners? That big piece of equipment shouldn't be downtown during or after a storm, because it just can't maneuver like a smaller truck. And we should be out writing tickets to the businesses or the landlords. It's not up to us to clear all the sidewalks. We send the front, the little front-end loaders down the sidewalks, but the business owners have to get it, that they need to widen the sidewalks and soft and clear, that we can't do it all. They have to help out and widen the sidewalks and cut out, shovel out, out, you know, so you can get out to the street when you park. I mean, it's not up to us to do everything. The only other thing in the neighborhoods, just the packing of the corners, very aggravating for everybody when you're trying to keep your sidewalk clean, and then the corners get packed with snow, and you got to dig it out again. And the only other thing, I know the commissioner was going to work on, was just, you know, the timing of the Parks Department, you know? The plow should be out first, and then the Parks Department should be out with the bobcats. It shouldn't be the other way around. I don't know why some of the bobcats are out before it starts snowing. They're ineffective that way. So those are my observations. You know, it was a difficult storm, we did a good job with the equipment we had. 10 years ago, we used to have 110 pieces out there, now we're down to 57 or so. So it's, it's not easy, we appreciate the work that they do, but we just need to keep improving. Thank you.
Councilor Getchir.
Thank you, Mayor Rook. I think that this is a good discussion, but it should have been had when the first motion got put out there, because there's a lot of assumptions going on here right now. And the quicker we can get the DPW here to do a presentation, hopefully next Tuesday, the more we can have insight into actually what happens. I want to thank the manager, because I was on the phone with him 100 times, and when people are up many hours and they're getting phone calls and you're calling back and forth, it can get frustrating to everybody. So I apologize for all the phone calls back and forth. But when you look, I have residents tell me that the plow never went down my street for 24 hours. I don't know if that's true or not. GPS systems on all the plow trucks will solve that, and it actually protects the operator. It tells you where people are. It's a process that is in favor of the worker, much like the vests, the cameras for the police. It is something that protects the worker, but some workers, you know, push back on it, saying, oh, they're watching me, this and that. Well, that's not normally the case. And, you know, when we get into sidewalks, I had a student come to me this morning and say, he's trying to walk from Midland Street over to Westview for, not Westview, Westchester, for a bus stop, and he's in 18 inches of snow along the whole way, just trying to get there. And that's our job, is to try to make sure that residents understand that it's not about them clearing the sidewalks, it's about trying to get people to do foot traffic safely. And that's what kids do. The city has many challenges, and when you look, you have to look at scheduling, how do we manage people in long storms? Do we call them in late at night and say, hey, sleep here for four hours? Because once you send a worker home, very rarely do they want to come back. So if you work like 18, 20 hours, and they say, go home, you know, we'll see you in the morning, most times people don't want to come back. So those are the things that I'm interested in seeing on how the operations works, the preparedness. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, Mr. Manager, how many pieces of equipment do we have that were contractors, and how many were city employees?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. I'm going to give you an approximate, with 28, approximately 28 city vehicles out there, and then the remainder, I'm going to tell you, 49, 48, someplace around there, with private contractors. That, if that equals anywhere around that 70 number, that's what we had. If I can get this on my email, I'll correct myself here in a moment. And some of, some of the issues that we had during the day, obviously, we had a couple of our vehicles go down, but I want to say thank you very much to the mechanics. It was actually one of the, one of the Hill trucks, which is one of the larger trucks, and that was down for a few hours, but then back up. We unfortunately, I believe, we lost one or two contractors in total. Now, once again, this happens, I've been in a small part of this business in years past, and when some of our contractors, quite frankly, most of our contractors are sole proprietors, so they're driving a truck themselves. We have a few companies and organizations that might have three or four vehicles on the city, but most of the time, they have three or four drivers. They don't have eight drivers that can go around the clock. So there's a, there was a safety concern, given that the stretch of this storm hit. But, you know, I think that, of course, we can always do better, but I think that Councilor Dakota brought it up. I had witnessed it a number of times, and I appreciate all the phone calls from the council, and I know that the Assistant City Manager Machado does as well, because we are also out there in a second set of eyes, as spotters, just trying to help. And I can tell you, I was speaking to one particular councillor, and one street was beautiful, and the follow-up street was, quite frankly, looked like it hadn't been touched. But what was going on there, and we need to figure this out, is people were throwing snow back into the street. And when you're talking about a standard 250 going down, eight-foot blade, that would make it look like the street had never been touched. So we should, we have been discussing coming up of the campaign to please don't throw the snow, and in this particular instance, I saw it more than once, I know that, I know that Assistant City Manager Machado saw it more than once, and so did the commissioner. At some point in time, we have to continue to remind people not to put the snow back out in the street. If they can put it in their front yard, or wherever the case may be, that would be extremely helpful to all of us, because on those side streets, on some of the small side streets, it really creates a problem. In regards to towing and parking, there were 74 tows, 130 parking tickets put forward. I want the residents to know that is not the first course of action, that's not what we're trying to do, as Councilor Dakota had mentioned. When there is a problem, we ask everyone to try to park smarter. You know, let's face it, we are in a tight city, we're in a city that a lot of our streets were meant for one vehicle, and I would never tell anyone to get rid of all their other cars, because they don't have off-street parking, that would be not right. But we have to try to spark, try to park a little bit smarter, we don't have all of the capacity available in our garages. But those folks that were probably towed, I bet you, and I can find out from the chief, I bet you they were on the corners where our plows could not make those corners. And once again, our PD does do a great job, fire departments, of course, out taking care of fire hydrants and things of that nature. But in regards to people who are not shoveling their sidewalks, we, I've charged Assistant City Manager Machado with this, to talk to DDS. This could be, this could be pushback, just so we all know. There's a responsibility of every homeowner to clean their sidewalk. So that is something, but it's a 12 hours after the storm lapses, and I, believe me, we've taken more phone calls in the past, say, 48 hours, about when the plow comes back down, there are ways to stop that, there really are. You can build, you can build it up. I do, I did it all the time, you can build up something on your side of the sidewalk, at least allowing, you know, a double walkway path down there. So there's a lot going on, there are a lot of people that feel as though they're pushing it back in because it came from the street, which I don't necessarily agree with, but it's just going to come back when we have to go back and clean up. So this is a lot to get into, and I think I want to go back to Councilor Robinson's previous comment, cities and towns are very good at 3, 4, 5 inches, I'll leave you at 6-inch storms, not a big deal, 17-inch storms, whether it's the first storm we receive, or the second or the third, we don't have a lot of place to put a lot of this, a lot of this snow. Many of the councils were also asking about brining, which we are just waiting on a couple of parts. I'd get into brining it quietly with everybody later on, you can look it up, but it's a very good technique, I think, that's going to be utilized here in the city of Lowell, and that was started right here by this council. So that should be happening. But we are all ears on this, we're trying to figure out a better way to do it. A couple of ideas about opening it up to other members of the union that may not typically shovel, or may not want to, or don't want, or would like to, excuse me, that's an idea that we'll take forward. You know, but the, the public safety part of it, or the safety of all of the vehicles and the men and women who are out there working, that's something that I take very serious, and at some point in time, we do have to stop. We were very fortunate during this last storm, given the fact how long it lasted, and when I say minor at this time, we had one minor incident, minor, not even worth talking about, to be quite frank, and I don't even think you folks will see it. But I think that's kudos to the professionals that are out there that are driving some of these rigs that are really large, and they did, they did a darn good job, having been over to DPW and up at Parks, and just pulling over and saying thank you. So we will work through this. Every councillor has called me and we talked, probably multiple times that night, with myself or the Assistant City Manager. We welcome that, we want that, we want to know what may not be happening correctly, and we'll continue to get through this, and spring's right around the corner. Maybe not, but we're getting it.
Councilor Getchir, anything else?
So, so Manager Golden, one thing that really sticks out to me is that the number of equipment. So you said 48 and 25, so there's 73 pieces. Back in 2022, I had asked for a report from the DPW on equipment. Back then, there were 72 pieces of contracted pieces and 39 of the city pieces, which came out to 111 pieces of equipment. And today, we had 73, so roughly 65% of that thing. So we're asking employees to do one and a half times the work in this type of environment. We asked these questions early on in the spring of last year, okay, where are we in these plow contracts? Do we have these contractors coming back? And then, you know, as much as, I think, probably as late as, and someone can correct me here, is almost the end of November, there was a sign on the boulevard asking for plow drivers. It may be, is it still there? And it may be still there. And, you know, when we start asking employees to do this type of work, we, the whole city has to understand that we weren't prepared because we didn't have the equipment that equipment that we had just two years ago. And the memo is from June 28 of 2022. So when you look at it and you see in 73 pieces of equipment, 48 from the contractor, and you had 72 at that point, last year, same time. And then you look at this year, you had 25 city, when you had 39 back then. And one of the interesting things is, we're not even asking what the size of the equipment is, because if out of your 25, or out of your 48, if they're all F-250s and F-350s, they can't handle this storm, especially if they go home. Because once you go home and you let that stuff dry up a little bit, it's like three times. Like, right now, moving that stuff is, thank goodness, rain's coming, but not in the amount it's coming in, obviously. But I think that that's your challenge down there, is how do we get contractors here and try to get them to do the duty, and how do we get more departments involved in more CDL licenses and more things to get our equipment? Because we still have the same number of equipment, we just don't have the number of drivers, maybe. And some of the equipment is in extremely bad shape. I would not disagree with that, because we've talked about that also, where they don't even have inspection stickers on some of these vehicles, and they're not capable of doing what they were two years ago. So I think that's where our challenges lie right now, but I'm still very interested in hearing how this operation works, and I'm hoping that we can have a presentation for next week. If we don't get pounded by Mother Nature over the next week, maybe we can have something here and have a real conversation for the residents. But when you look at the numbers, the numbers show the outcome, and that's really what you can see, really. And it's nothing against the workers, because they're down that many units. Thank you.
The councillor, Charles, and councillor Mercer. So councillor Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of my comments have already been stated, but I do want to thank Paul Saint-Sir, the DPW, and also the manager and assistant manager. I know both of you were up the entire weekend as well, as late as the contractors and the plowers and the city staff. Many of the comments and many of the challenges have been stated already, but I want to reiterate one more challenge, which the councillors and the manager mentioned earlier about the snow on the edge of the corners, especially in dense, highly dense neighborhoods, you know, that the smaller streets, small sidewalks, and there's really no place to put those snow that are being pushed to the corners, or even back onto the sidewalks. It's almost like a battle between the residents and the plowers, you know. The plowers need to put the snow off the street to somewhere, and the only place they have is just right to the curbs and to the sidewalks. And the residents, for the most part, when they do their work, they clear the snow back into the street or into the, into the corner banks. And I think this week, we're probably fortunate, we're going to have warmer weathers when the snow gonna melt. But many times, the snow just stayed there, and it gets colder, it becomes hard, it becomes icy, and it's virtually impossible now for the residents to move the snow, and especially with the big banks, the big hill of snow. And unfortunately, some of those are on the sidewalk. The residents cannot walk on the sidewalks, becomes a public safety issue. So I know that some towns, they do have a plan to pick up the snow and transport somewhere else. So maybe along with next week's report, or whenever the report come back, if your administration can look for a way, maybe to explore ways to move some of the snow, the banks of snow, the heap of snow, to some other location in the city. I'm not sure. This is a question to, it's a challenge for the administration to look at, if there's a way to move this heap of snow somewhere else. Another part areas in the neighborhoods are the parks, the sidewalk around the parks, you know, the city worker, DPW, they focus on the streets and the sidewalk where the residents are. But the sidewalks around the parks, sometimes they don't get shoveled out, and that's very important, especially during cold winters, when the residents, they need to use public space to get out of the house. They don't want to be cooped up inside for so long. It's good for mental health, just to release the stress. So they want to go walk around the parks, but unfortunately, they can't because the sidewalks around the parks not shovel. So I would ask the DPW, so just to look at the sidewalks around the parks throughout the city as well. I know it's a challenge, a lot of challenge that we brought up today. This is a timely motion to discuss right now. This challenge is going to come up over and over again, but hopefully, we can help alleviate some of the issues with this problem. Thank you.
By the time this discussion's over, it'll be springtime. Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot that I was going to mention was also hit on by the manager. I would just ask, my only real question I have is around the towing. You said that most of the cars were probably at intersections, or corners, or whatever, but do we have, like, a protocol for towing? Is it the plow drivers that make the decision? Like, who's calling? You know, is it when residents call? To me, I kind of feel like it's all or nothing, like that, you know, it shouldn't be spot, maybe towing, if that's not what we're supposed to be doing. I guess I'm asking what the protocol is. And then also, whether or not we have the inspectors out already looking at the sidewalks. On the main roads, I know it's the same businesses on Gorham Street that haven't, you know, shoveled the walkway in the past, have not done it again. We have a lot of kids that walk to the Butler School. It was brought up in the past that those need to be taken care of. And also, just the snow on the corners on the main roads, they're really creating like blind spots. I've had residents reach out to me and say, you know what, I just can't break through that with my snow blower. It's six feet high, it's solid ice, and, you know, and they've kind of said to me, I'm just letting you know, in case I get a ticket ahead of time, that I cannot clear that. So I don't know if we can go back and just hit some of those blind corners, at least with a backhoe and, you know, a truck, and clear them out a little bit. Thank you.
Councillor Mercer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very grateful to my colleagues for giving accolades to DPW, because actually, they did a tremendous job. Paul Saint-Sir, the staff, the crew, the people that were there in the middle of the night, and you know who I'm talking about, and you were there too, Sean. I know that you did a very good job, Mr. Manager. Honest to God, and I'm happy that everybody recognized that, because this wasn't just a little snow dusting. This was like a blizzard, for God's sake. So, and I just want to, so thank you to all those, the private contractors, the DPW crew and all. I also want to say that one way that we solved some sort of a problem when we lived on Royal Street, you know that it's very congested there, not everybody has a driveway, we'd gather like a caravan and go to the closest garage that was free. And people would leave their cars there, and then they'd pile in to our car, and we'd bring them home. So that's how we did it. We, because we'd put our car in the driveway, and people had two cars, and so that's how we did it. So then when the parking garage, when that snow ban lifted, and the people had to go get their cars, we'd bring all the people back, and they got their cars. So if people could consolidate like that, that would be some sort of a plan. Of course, I don't know today if people know their neighbors, but years ago, we knew everybody. So that would be a good idea to help people, bring them down. You know, I'll follow you down, leave your car there, I'll bring you back home. If you do that to a few of the neighbors like we did, it works out very well. Thank you so much.
Councillor Janas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo the thanks to Paul Saint-Sir and the crew at DPW, and all the contractors who were out working this very difficult storm. It's hard to get your feet wet with a 17-inch storm. That's the first one of the season, and goes for however, 20 hours, or whatever it was. It's a lot of work. There were a couple, couple spots that, you know, people brought to me, that I brought to you guys as things to look at. And just going forward, kind of longer term, I wonder if there's a way that we can create some more policies and procedures, and, you know, more opportunities as well, particularly around the clearing of crosswalks and, you know, the ramps, the intersections. It really presents a large accessibility issue for our residents in wheelchairs or even canes and walkers. It can be very difficult for these folks to get around with the snow out there. And other people have mentioned that the homes and the businesses who are kind of repeat offenders in terms of clearing, not clearing the snow on their sidewalks. I don't know if there's any kind of outreach campaign that we can do, where we can, you know, go knock on doors and just talk to people and say, hey, you know, Joe Schmo, your neighbors are not happy with your sidewalk clearing, and, you know, you really got to get better about it, or the city's going to find you. Anything we can do like that to be proactive and try to get ahead of it for the next storm is going to be good. Another thought I had is, this storm, and it seems like many storms these days, there's a pretty sharp cutoff between rain and snow. For instance, we got 17 inches, Boston got like 3 inches. It didn't get anything until the next day. I wonder if there's some kind of way that we could reach out to contractors who are contracted in other municipalities south of us to say, hey, you know, if you're waiting around for it to snow, and it doesn't snow in Boston, or Newton, or Worcester, or wherever the heck these folks are contracted, Brockton, you know, maybe you can have a secondary contract with us, and so you can come up here, if it's raining on the South Shore, help us out. And then conversely, if we're in a situation where it's a coastal storm, and we don't get much, you know, our contractors could go help the other municipalities. So it might be something where we can have some conversations with other municipalities, or just do a public records request for their snow contracts, and then reach out to those folks. I think that's an opportunity and something we can explore that may not have been tried before. The last thing I want to mention is, obviously, we do have quite a bit of rain coming in. I noticed on my way over here that there were quite a few storm drains that are covered in snow. I am concerned about street flooding over the next couple of days. And so I just, while people are engaged on this discussion, I'd like to just ask, if somebody has a storm drain they know is blocked, and they need it to be freed up, you know, who should they call? Should they be calling DPW directly? Should they call their councillor, and we can forward it? You know, I think that this is going to be an issue for us over the next couple of days. So people having that information of who to call would probably be helpful.
Thank you. Councillor Getche?
Mayor Ruck, just on that subject, is there a way that we could have maybe wastewater, or somebody actually flag the basins in the winter for the residents, so they actually have an idea where they are, so that they could, maybe we have kids or someone go out and just clear them every now and then, because sometimes the edges of the road just get off. And that's just a statement. If you can look into that, that would be great.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. Another thing, when we're looking for shoveling crews and manual labor, I wonder if maybe we have a conversation and reach out to LTLC, see if there's any of the residents down there that might want to earn a couple bucks during a snowstorm, because I saw a lot of people walking the streets in Centerville with shovels. So maybe LTLC, it's an opportunity to get some people a couple bucks in their pocket for the day.
Thank you. Is there any will to send us to a neighborhood subcommittee, or do you want to do a city council meeting? This is on pass, we talked about an hour about this subject, so do you want to have its own subcommittee with this? Bushed by councillor Janas, second by councillor Noon?
Yes. I think it's a great idea, Mr. Mayor, to send the report to the subcommittee, maybe Public Safety Subcommittee, to look into it, and look at, when do we do a parking ban, and, you know, when do we do, you know, all those questions that pop up just now, so that you have DPDs, you have DPW, you have police, and all that in one room talking about it. So maybe, you know, that would be a good thing to do.
Great. So it was a motion to send to a Public Safety Subcommittee. I was in favor. Say aye opposed. That passes. Next up, 6.9. Councillor Noon requests city manager provide status of hiring a human resources director. I believe councillor Robinson is at 4.7 as well?
Yes, please. I'd make a motion to bundle it too.
Motion by councillor Robinson to bundle 6.9 and 4.7. Motion by councillor Robinson requesting city manager provide an update on status on filling the vacant director of Human Services position. No second needed. Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After I filed the motion, I learned that the manager and his team have received a number of resume, a number of interest and good, they see appeared to be some good candidate. I know that the interview is ongoing. I just hope that, you know, we get, you know, an individual that can help, you know, develop and implement the HR DEI policy for the city. I think it's important. I know that we have DEI officers, but having someone, having a person who were head of HR, having that experience and help develop and implement that, you know, DEI policy, not just for the city, but also working with department head, who has some training from Middlesex Community College already, certainly help, certainly go a long way. So I, the manager probably have announcement very soon. So I just, this is, I file this as after learning, you know, before learning what's going on. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson?
Motion speaks for itself. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Council is, we're actually pretty deep into the screening committee side of this, and I would hope to be making an announcement in the next, relatively soon, the next couple of weeks. So you are correct, councillor Noon, we've talked about this. So we had a lot of great interest, and once again, hopefully, whichever candidate we choose is going to accept, and then we'll move on from there. So we'll have something back to you sooner rather than later.
Great. Also in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. 6.10. Councillor Noon requests city manager provide update and status of potential support to the police department, fire department, schools, and Lowell Community Health Center due to newly arrived migrant families at the ICC, seconded by councillor Janas. Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we know that the first wave came thanks to city manager's office, particularly Sean Machado, who gave us a play-by-play report, basically, I know, as the migrant come in. Appreciate that very much. I know, not just me, but all the councils. This, the migrant coming to ICC, clearly, this definitely is going to impact, you know, a police, a fire, a school, and even our nonprofit Lowell Community Health Centers. And we do need help. I think I know that, I've learned that the managers have reached out to the state delegation, asking maybe also the Congresswoman Trowant, asking for resource, support in term of resources, because it's going to affect us. I know, I know that, that, you know, I know that the school department, the interim superintendent has been working with the administrations in term of, you know, expecting the student of the migrant to attend school. But the report actually really helpful. So, Mr. Managers, if you and your team work with the delegation and Congresswoman Trowant, and looking for assistance, because clearly, it's going to impact us, and we cannot really take care of this without the support. Thank you.
Any other comments? All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. 6.11. Councillor Noon requests city manager reach out to Lowell Housing Authority Director to make presentation regarding Final River Edge Project to city council at a regularly scheduled meeting, seconded by councillor Mercer. Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this, we see the impact. They're not doing anything on the final project of the River Edge has had on the South Lowell areas. You see the last flood in August of this year. And thanks to the city manager's office, and the city manager, the DPW, and the LHA working together to address, at least a temporary address of those flood in those area. The final project of this, I think it's somewhat of 30-something unit here, it certainly is going to eliminate any flood that's going to happen at that area. I, the last time, if I recall correctly, that we, the city have awarded the Lowell Housing Authorities some money to do a feasibility study, and to take care of that final project in the River Edge. So having them come in and give us an update as to where they add on it, you know, how can we work together with them to address, to speeding up this process, would clearly help, helpful, and helpful to the South Lowell areas as well when this project is done, and also add more stock to the housing.
Any other comments? Nope. All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Motion 6.12. Councillor Noon requests housing subcommittee meet to consider the adoption of the municipal affording housing trust law, match chapter 44, section 55c, and requests city manager have CFO and/or DPD director reach out to cities or towns to participate and report back to the housing subcommittee regarding their experience, seconded by councillor Yam. Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So... So there's the report, motion respond to this, I believe, back in February of last year. So I think this is one way looking at other revenue, similar to, you know, CPC, Community Preservation Act. So if we were to do this and take a look at it and looking at how other city and town, I think some of we are doing it, how we can, you know, create revenues or raise revenue from developers who want to develop and take, you know, so I, I think, I think learning from them and having the CFO and/or the, the DPD directors, Joe Wannaby, by Rose, to, to look at how they do it and how can we adopt that and, and, and create this affordable housing trust fund for our city. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye, opposed nay, motion passes. The chairman doesn't mind, councilors of mine can do my three from up here. They're rather quick. Great. 6.13, Mayor Rourke, requests city manager update Council on Rourke Bridge repairs. Speak for itself. All's in favor, say aye, opposed nay. Oh, I'm sorry, seconded by Counselor Robinson. All's in favor, say aye, opposed nay, motion passes. 6.14, I myself, request city manager have proper departments repair Godrea on the corner of Mammoth and East Meadow Roads, again speaks for itself, seconded by Counselor Gitchia. Motion, all's in favor, say aye, opposed nay, motion passes. Motion 6.15, I myself, Mayor Rourke, request city manager contact waste management concerning the quality of extra waste purple trash bags. Also request availability of one extra week of recycling pickup during the holiday season, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Now, Mr. Manager, on this one, I will say a couple of words. The, the purple bags, the, the quality of them has deteriorated greatly. They're terrible. You can see through them. You know, they used to be much stronger and, you know, much more durable. They're, you know, the string is just, it's, it's odd how you get complaints on certain issues, this one here, especially during the Christmas season, you know, party, party season as well. It's, it's terrible and, you know, the cost is still exorbitant. So if anything, just reach out and say why the deterioration of something that's costing the citizens of the city and also the availability. I filed this about six different times, about one extra week recycling. I know it's probably a contract issue, but I believe that contract is up sometime in 2024. So maybe if we can put that in there going forward, that would be great. Any other comments? Nope. With that being said, all's in favor, Counselor Yehi.
I just want to say, great motions. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye, opposed nay, motion passes. Returning to the unfinished business portion of the motions that were brought over to this evening. 4.1, Counsel Robinson requesting city manager provide an update on implementation of the 311 system, seconded by Counselor Gitchia. Counselor Robinson.
I'd like to withdraw this because I believe Counselor Gitchia brought this motion forward a week or two ago.
He did.
And so.
Waiting for the response.
It combined pretty much, right? Okay. Thank you.
4.2, Counselor Robinson, request city manager provide update of potential business district improvements to bridge in Third Street parking lot, seconded by Counselor Scott. Counselor Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself.
4.3, we dealt with. 4.4, Counselor Robinson, request city manager update council on any potential parking locations in the denser neighborhoods for winter operations, seconded by Counselor Gitchia. Counselor Robinson.
I think this is one that everyone would benefit from if we can identify any locations that, again, if we can get, give people an opportunity in their, their neighborhood or close, like so, for example, Sunville, we don't have a parking garage that side of the bridge for the most part. So you can't realistically expect people to go from, say, Christian Hill by foot in the middle of a snowstorm or whatever to park or retrieve their vehicles. I mean, I've heard ideas kicked around with shuttle service and all that, but ideally, if we could find some locations within the district, it's something that would help what we've been discussing a good portion of tonight's. So I think that's something all districts, especially, especially the more densely populated locations would benefit greatly from. Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I would just, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I would just add that I made this motion, I believe it was last March, and we received a response back a few months after that. And the response was basically looking at schools and parks, parking at parks. And the response basically said that there wouldn't be enough time for them to adequately clean the parks and the schools if we did that. I would like us to look again, at least I understand the schools, that there's a lot of work that has to happen right away, but the parks don't necessarily have to be used the next day. They don't have to be in perfect condition. If we could just have like, you know, the main row, you know, cleared so that cars can get out, even if they have to dig them out. I think that's something to look at. I also saw in Somerville that they do odd even. You can only park on the odd side of the road during snowstorms and then they come back, I think, like the next day and they do the opposite. So if we could just kind of maybe look at being creative, I do think, you know, as Counsel Robinson said, for someone to walk from Bridge Street or from Sacred Heart, you know, and, and find their way to downtown, it's not the easiest thing to do. So if we could look at alternatives, I think it makes sense. Thank you.
Counselor Gitchia.
We're on the topic of parking. Mr. Manager, out front in the parking lot, we have vehicles that park overnight. If they all could just park on one side so one side could be cleared for the employees because it's like you get nothing cleared out there because we have, I, I don't know whose vehicles they are, the vans, but there's vans that park overnight over there with mask plates on it. If they can just all park maybe on the left-hand side, then you could have it at least plowed out for the employees and then just jump over to the other side and get it finished. But where they're parked staggered, that lot's a complete mess. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye, opposed nay, motion passes. 4.5, Counsel Robinson, request city manager provide update to leaf removal operations in all public green space, seconded by Counselor Mercier. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. This one here is, is pretty much, I'd like to say thank you because there has been some progress made since the motion came out and it pretty much speaks for itself, you know. I, I would just hate to see because of whatever happened in the fall, we get behind and now opening days and ballparks when we're concentrating on that. It's, it's kind of a setback with heavy leaf removal, so appreciate it. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye, opposed nay, motion passes. 4.6, Counselor Robinson, request city manager have the proper department work with surrounding communities, the state administration and community partners, as well as utilizing our emergency management plan to create additional winter protocol bed opportunities, seconded by Counselor Yem. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Again, I know the number hovers around 165 beds. How many of those are available on any given night varies tremendously, but we're all aware it's, it's, it's a problem that we, or a challenge that we've been discussing for a long time. And so any kind of additional winter protocol beds that we could kind of put together to offer people a safe haven, I mean, as you see out the window right now, it's raining and snowing. So any, any additional beds would be, you know, I'm sure filled as soon as you could find them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All's in favor, say aye, opposed nay, motion passes. Next communication from city manager, 7.1, motion responses. Motion response A, constables. Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to also thank the administration and city manager for the response to my motion on constables and the money being generated. And speaking about the money being generated, it's almost amounts to peanuts. But I'm under the belief that a huge gap in accountability was lacking. And if anything comes out of this, my motion is what brought light to the fact that we should monitor this and oversee this issue to the point that people that want this council to support and vote for their appointments need to be honest enough to pay what they owe. I am completely sure that under the leadership of our relatively new chief assessor, Allen, that this issue will be addressed more carefully and that she will be right on top of this issue. It is also my understanding that certain items were exempt or waived or free from fees. This of which I speak was not part of this report that this council received, but I would like to see the law and the chapter that states that. This statement made to me was not factual. The law states 25% of revenue collected, nowhere that I could find did it state any exemptions or fee, free fees. It shows, if it's so, please show me the law because I don't think I ever seen it. In the past, constables were slacking off and not bothering to pay the city anything. So letters went out to remind them of their obligation to the city. Maybe this should be done again. What was happening before is not acceptable to me. This motion is for the city to have someone oversee this issue, get the revenue that the city is entitled to. And if any one of the seven constables do not comply after receiving a letter, their appointment ought to be suspended or terminated. Perhaps if this issue is followed and this city is on top of this, we just may get more than just peanuts that you showed us through this report. We all need to pay our fair share, so to do, so do those that we appoint that generate money to the city. Now, I did a little research on other communities and such, and I kept it to the page on here. And we're not alone in this. There's a lot of other communities that they don't even, they don't have any oversight and it's not just Lowell, but these are the laws. We're supposed to abide by the laws and if the law says 25% and they're issuing, I'll kind of, and I'm not saying maybe they, they don't do the money, but constables may serve a civil process and warrants, process and criminal cases. They may serve demand notices and citations, serve warrants and subpoenas, capias, small claims notice, restraining orders, summons, court orders. There's a lot of things that they do and yet we don't get anything, well, hardly anything if you, you know, you saw what we got. I was shocked to see that. I think we could have got a lot more and I know that it's going to change because I know that Ellen is going to be on top of this and I trust her and she's the best. Because I want my fair share for the taxpayer. We're always looking, where's the money? Where's the money? There is money out there. It's not me saying, let's go after them. It's the law and we're not enforcing the law. Why do we bother making laws if we, if we don't follow them or have someone oversee them? And we tell you, get your car off the road. We have three or four garages that are free and yet they don't. It's so what? That's not the attitude we should take. We all should work together. If a neighbor's having trouble, help that person out. I mean, I'm not that mean, but you know, I just want my fair share for the city and then maybe we'll have people that'll say, gee, it's nice to live here. I don't have, I'm not burdened so much with the taxes and stuff. That's all I'm asking for so that we can oversee this and get what we should be getting. Thank you.
Counsel Gitchia.
Maybe you know this answer, Mayor Rourke. I, I know nothing about the tracking system to this and the, is it on an honor system? Is there a way of tracking how many are done in the city per day? How does that work? Is it through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager because does it go through the police? How do you, when, when someone delivers one, if there's 20 of them in a day, how do we know? I, I don't know.
Assistant CFO, Mr. Ball.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So currently it is on the honor system by the constables. So once a month, the constables are required, if their allotment is over $500, they have to provide to us a detailed report of the number of summons and it's broken out in, between all the different categories that they do, along with a check for the total amount of the receipts. But it is on the honor system.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Ball, do you see that every month or do we not? Because obviously the honor system is not working. Somebody is not, you know, fulfilling the need to the honor system and how do we track that then? I, I have no idea.
Mr. Ball.
So, so currently we have seven constables that are active that have been appointed by the council. Currently only approximately one of them pays us on a quarterly basis. The others, we have yet to get the funds from the other constables for their quarterly payments. However, we are in process, the chief assessor is working with the law department to send out a letter to the other six constables that have not been currently paying us. So to answer your question, we are in the process of, of trying to.
So roughly, how long have they been constables without any reporting to the city? Has it been many years or the manager, manager Golden?
Yeah, Mr. Manager. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Constables have the ability to pay, as Mr. Ball was stating, on a, on a quarterly basis or yearly basis. And typically what we see is some will just pay as you go and then some will just pay at the end of the year. We're looking at approximately, I believe, we typically budget for about 2,500 per year per the memorandum that's in front of you, Lawrence, Worcester, they're in the two, two to $3,000 range. By law, the service fee is $20. So by law, the service fee is $20 of which we're, we can get, we can receive 25%, which equals $5. Then there's an administrative fee. So if there is something of a summary, and I know a tad about this when you're, when you're doing any type of summary process, it's probably going to cost you about $45. And I shouldn't have said that. It's, it's an open market, but in that range. 20 of it is something that is set by the MGL and that's where we can get our 25% of. There are other pieces here. Criminal is not chargeable. So if there's a criminal piece, it's not chargeable and there are some, sheriffs, for instance, state employees, we don't receive any money from the sheriff's office. So of the seven constables that are, that are currently here in Lowell, you have to recall that we just came out of COVID where there were no evictions. You know, there were no evictions for, for a period of time. So therefore there wasn't any money to be collected. So I would think that we're going to start to see an increase in this, whether it be quarterly or by the end of the year. And I think, but our, our historical records show that we're always in that two to $3,000 range. Under the Mass. General Law, there's also an opportunity, which I believe it's Rule 4(c), which the court can actually waive the fee, the $5. And so there's a lot to unpack here. Counselor Mercier and I were talking about this. I've learned probably more about summary process and civil movements than I, I ever thought I would. But we are within, even a larger city like Worcester and Lawrence, we're, we're within that delta, if you would. I've talked to a couple of the folks, myself, that are local constables. And when I, I was talking about, do you know the other constables? And they both rattled off the same three, didn't know the other four. So it's kind of an interesting thing as to, as to where we are. But Ms. Burdo is going to be contacting all seven to let them know that we're paying attention and we want to make sure, as Counselor Mercier had stated, that the, the appropriate fee that is set forth by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we do receive that. Counselor? Thank you, Mr. Ball, for your, your hard work on this.
I just want to thank the manager, Mr. Ball. It was very informative.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question just is around the honor system. Is there any way, any reporting function or anything to receive from whoever's, you know, issuing these that we could get directly instead of using the honor system? You said six out of seven aren't reporting. They're paying $250 fee to be sworn in. It doesn't seem like they are making no money that they would pay that fee to become constables. That's my only concern is knowing that they're paying to do this. The numbers don't really add up, I think. So, thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick questions. May we have a list of those seven constable for the council, for all the councilor? And my other follow-up question, out of seven, is Middlesex Sheriff included in this seven constable?
No.
Right. Because, you know, in my real estate business, we, we contract the, the sheriff department for execution after the, after the court ordered the tenant to move out.
Correct, Counsel. I think, you know, to, to, to Counselor Gitchia earlier is, sometimes the, goes through the court system, you're required to go through the sheriff's office for issuances and we don't, we don't get anything out of that. Yep. Sure, Mr. Ball, get the seven numbers? Sure. Great. Counselor Yem, anything else?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Janess.
Can we do, can we do our taxes on the honor system?
I wish.
No? Oh, I don't know why. Sorry.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Going forward, when we get something that comes to us to approve the constables, as we have to vote on, can we include in those, in that information that comes forward, whether or not these folks have or not these folks have made their payments? I know it's still a bit of a guess. We don't know how much they would actually know, owe us. But if we have something that says, yes, you know, Constable XYZ did remit their FY23 obligations, you know, I think it would help us knowing who, who to approve and who not to approve going forward. Relatedly, if we have people who aren't paying, can we revoke their constable license? Or is it, once it's done, it's done? Is it an annual thing, or is it just we issue it in perpetuity? Three years? Okay. So if we can't revoke it, I think we really need to be smart about who we approve going forward. Because this is lost revenue that's being made up by the taxpayers. So we just got to get smarter about it. If people don't want to follow the rules, as Counsel Mercier mentioned, you know, there are laws, and we have to, we have to enforce the laws. And I think the best way that this council can enforce it is to not renew licenses for people who don't fulfill their obligations to the city. Thank you.
Any other comments? Motion Response B, feasibility combining city and school.
Mr. Mayor, if I could have the city clerk note that I'm going to recuse myself from this motion of response.
Go through. Now, motion Response Feasibility Combining City and School Services.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead. Counsel Janess.
Sorry, I had my hand up.
Get it up there.
Need to get a flare or something over here. So I appreciate this report. I think there's some, some good opportunity here, and at the very least, it's clear that we need to engage in some deeper discussion to find out whether or not this is a path we want to continue down. Motion Response mentions that the best place to go for this would be a joint subcommittee of the city council and school committee, finance subcommittees. So I'd like to make a motion, refer it there for that meeting to be set up and discussed.
Motion to Adopt by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Janess. There, roll call. Roll call, please. Counsel Getchere.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
11 years. Great. Votes from the city manager.
Motion to bundle.
Motion by Counsel Scott to bundle, seconded by Counsel Robinson. 8.1, all in favor, say I oppose, motion passes. 8.1, vote to accept, expend $166,189.98 from the FY24 State Aid to Public Libraries Program Award. 8.2, vote to authorize city manager to convey 20 Favor Street. And 8.3, vote to authorize city manager to execute license agreement with Lowell Festival Foundation. Comments on any? Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Comment on 8.1. I'm very happy for our library, the state aid coming to the library is need, much needed. If you recall back here before August 2021, the cities, the state, the library was in danger of not even qualified for this funding. Because at the time, council, you know, having CFO Baldwin working with the board trustee, you know, come up not only increase the funding to the library, but also creating a five-year plan. And now, at the same time, they now, because of what we did, they are eligible for this grant fund to the library. This is really much needed for the library, and given that just recently, we have a ribbon cutting on the book mobile. So kudo to the administration and to the library board trustee for receiving this grant. Thank you.
Well said, Counsel. Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question on motion 8.2 through you to Mr. Manager. What will be the usage of the 20 Favor Street, sir? And then is there any restriction? Thank you.
Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel of that is going to be housing. And Assistant City Manager Rose, do we know the number of units yet, or are we still working through that?
The proposal that was selected estimates that depending on the amount of interior redevelopment, that they're assuming a number between 10 and 14 market rate units, rental units.
Number of bedroom? Any idea?
Bedrooms?
No, we don't know that yet.
Thank you.
If I remember correctly, that place is really a dub. So Counsel Getchere.
My question is, there were two bidders on the RFP for this one. What was the price the other person offered, the second one that wasn't accepted?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but the minimum purchase price, in addition to a number of other factors, were included in the, the review of the responses.
So in the RFP process, what were the qualifying factors that were graded on so that, what made one more advantageous to the other? Was it the apartments, or was it? Because that number of apartments seems high. I haven't seen the parking over there, but I just, I just wonder.
That's in our TOD area, so the parking requirements are not the same as they would be, or even would have been traditionally. So that's, that's one thing just to note. But so the, the RFP included, yeah, a commitment to create housing, you know, minimum purchase price, schedule and planned activity, like how quick the developer can move towards actually constructing the project, among a few other things related to, you know, financial feasibility and all of those kinds of things. And so those things combined with the minimum purchase prices ultimately what is, what folks are looking to in order to make that recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The vote on the 20 Favor Street, I'm very pleased to see something going on with that because it's a building that the city owns that has no life there. And to see it being utilized for, for the good of people to be living there, that's beautiful, and that'd be good for that building to be revitalized, and there'll be life in it, and that's a good thing. Now, the next thing is, speaking of the Lowell Festival Foundation and that vote, do we have come up with a plan for a location on where performers can stay who are attending the Folk Festival? Or is it the Yen and Conference Center out of the picture? I don't know. Do we, did we not think about that yet? It's early, I know, but I just don't know where they're going to be, and I don't know.
Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel of that, we are not too early. Lowell Folk Fest starts honestly and truly, probably three or four weeks after it ends, the planning. I've been talking to Mr. Sutcliffe about that. He has put out some feelers, and unfortunately, at this time, it appears it may be outside of the city. But this, stay tuned on that, if you would. We've asked him to look around, but it's difficult because we have a number of performers, so we have to get them back and forth from a location. But Mr. Sutcliffe is, and the Festival Foundation have been working on that, I would probably say, for the better part of the last two to three months.
Sure, sure.
But it's something we, we have been actively engaged in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Robinson.
One question on the previous one that we were just discussing. It's Favor Street. Whoever won the bid, if they don't follow through on what they proposed, so as far as the timeframe or any of those things, what, what recourse would the city have at
There would be a reversion on that if they're not doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. The, the person that won this, and I'm not sure of the second person that applied for this piece, but is also the redeveloper of Danus Market.
Yes.
Over on Gorham Street, and what I only know as the Fish Market, which was two doors down. I had the opportunity to tour that, give or take about a month ago, month and a half ago, with the executive director of Mass Development. That was up here. And, yeah, Mr. Rivera, former mayor of, of the city of Lawrence, he was up here. We had this discussion, and I have to say, although I had nothing, this is something that DPD does, I'm very, very impressed with Mr. Montero and the work that he did, given the, the challenges that were at Danus Market. And once again, if everyone knows where I'm at, Danus Market, and then there's the old video store.
Yep.
And then next to it.
Landmark.
Landmark. Thank you, Counsel. And then next to that is the old fish store. To see what he did there is absolutely amazing. And the, the buildings is absolutely gorgeous, and we'd be proud of it. So that's where we ended up going with this. But if there was an issue, counselor, the revision, there'd be, there is a revisionary piece in there that we would take it back from them.
Thank you. I was just curious about the process of it. And I agree. I know that gentleman came before the council last, last cycle. I think CDBG, or one of the kind of great funds that was available, and from what I saw in the plans, it was an amazing project, so I'm glad to hear. And then I just also wanted to say, hey, it's never too early. Mark your calendars, it's right here, 26th, 27th, 28th of July. Looks like Folk Festival will be back again, so 10 weeks of winter, and then we'll start looking at that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Having said, indeed, a motion to adopt by Counsel Getchere, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Roll call, please. Counsel Getchere.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yeah.
It's 11 years. Great. Reports, subcommittees, we had a bunch of items that were sent to the subcommittee this evening. You all have that early tomorrow morning, and contact the clerk to schedule the, the meetings. Have you said, any announcements? Counsel Mercier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Sunday coming, January 14th, at 4:00 at the Songis Arena, the Bridge Club of Greater Lowell presents the Boston Bruins alumni versus our Lowell Fire Department hockey team. So tickets are very reasonable, 20 for adults, 16 for the, for a child. This is going to benefit the Bridge Club of Greater Lowell, who, who does a remarkable job, so we're very proud of that. And you'll have a great time. So if anybody is interested in coming, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Be on skates, Counselor?
I like to throw the puck out. That's about it.
Counsel Janess. I'm sorry, Counsel Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this Thursday is the opening of the Golden Gloves, presented by the Lowell San San Charities. It's a good event every year. It's a great Lowell tradition. And also, congratulations to Mick Ward, who is going to be inducted into the National Hall of Fame later, later on this year. So it's going to be exciting, Golden Gloves event this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any others? Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. First and foremost, I just want to, once again, thank DPW for all their hard work over the past few days. I think it is, stopped snowing, but it was snowing pretty well when you, when you all walked in. But to the men and women of the Department of Public Works, as well as the administration staff, that we were over there, they spent an awful lot of time taking some phone calls, working extremely hard. I think we're lucky to have those folks working as hard as they do for us. The second thing, Counsel, is, is next week, if I could have your indulgence, I would like to go through a year-end review of really 2023 and portions of 2022. I think it's important to have a discussion about where we were and what we, what we accomplished over the 700-plus motions, as well as a number of pieces that we've accomplished. So I would like to ask all of you next, next week, if it's okay with you. I'm probably going to speak for about 30 minutes, just in, I'm going to have all of the department heads here, just to take, maybe, you know, recognizing them for their hard work over the past 20 months that I've been here. And to follow up on that, once that is completed, I want to remind the council that by the end of February, the Assistant City Manager Rose will have the master plan, talking about where we will be going for the next five years. As I've discussed with each and every one of you, this master plan is not something that will sit anywhere. This is going to be a living, breathing piece that we will be talking about, probably in two informational's, I probably just set myself up, but at least one informational per month, per, per division. So it is something that we will be discussing, and so next week could be interesting, and I apologize, the CFO is saying, bring your popcorn, because sometimes I can be long-winded. So I apologize for that, but I think it's very important to make sure that each, the residents here understand how hard this council has been working, how hard the administration has been working over the past 20 months to accomplish some of these great, great tasks. And I want to give a lot of the accolades to the department heads throughout the city. So, thank you.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, then you mean you're going to deliver the state-of-the-city address? Like the governor, right?
We're calling it an update, a year-end review. State-of-the-city address. When, I, I would like to talk to the councilors and let the folks know all the wonderful things we've been doing. And we're not going to, no pomp and circumstances they have in other places, if that's, if, if that's okay with the council.
Yeah.
Counsel Scott.
That's what we call it.
I would just ask if it would be the will of the committee maybe to come at 6:00 next week? If that, you know, to give time for the presentation and for the regular meeting? So I'd make in the form of a motion, I guess.
Second.
Sound good to everybody? Great. Motion by Counsel Scott, seconded by Counsel Robinson. All in favor? Motion passes. Start at 6:00 next week for the state-of-the-city address. Counsel Yem, you have something?
Yes. Today is the National Law Enforcement Day. I just want to take this opportunity to thank.
Yes, Counsel, if I could. Officer DeSiboni is out there, asking to come in and get to the podium.
Yes.
He stands in for the Lowell Police Department?
Yes, yes. Next, next year.
Stand by, stand by. Hold on a second. Counsel Yem, you have it.
I just want to say, on behalf of the entire council, this administration, and the resident of the city, we would like to thank law enforcement, the police, the fire department, to that protect us and keep us safe. And some even lay their lives on the line to protect the people, the resident, the police, and the fire departments want to serve and to protect. So we would like to thank you for your service, and may God bless you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, officer. Thank you very much. One quick thing I just have, lastly, January 19th and 20th is the Massachusetts Municipal Association, their annual workshop conference. It'll be in Boston. If anybody's interested in going, just please contact Erastus in the mayor's office. We can get you registered and signed up to go. It's, I think it's Friday afternoon, and then Saturday morning. And I hear that CFO is going to be buying dinner for any council that goes Friday, Friday evening. So if anybody's interested in going, please just let Erastus know, and it's 19th and 20th of January. It's the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Workshop Conference. So, and a motion to adjourn by Counsel Scott, seconded by Counsel Robinson.[1783.01]